Yeah, I will call to order this meeting of the East Hampton Planning Board for Tuesday, January 4th, 2022. All members are appearing remotely and the meeting is being recorded. First item on the agenda is public speak. Any of you fine gentlemen like to address something that is not on the agenda tonight? That's what I like to see. Planning board minutes, November 9th, 2021.
Technically, your scrivener's error, they're actually the seventh. Don't know how I missed that one up.
Oh, yeah.
The agenda's, the agenda's wrong, the minutes are right.
Gotcha.
Okay, so, our minutes are right, got it.
Motion to approve the minutes, uh, November 7th?
Ken, this is your time to shine.
Oh, actually, no, I, I misspoke. So let me just walk this back. The, the agenda's right, the minutes are wrong. I can make the amendments if they're correctly, November 9th, 2021.
Alright. Oh, motion to approve the minutes with the changes to say November 9th, 2021.
Alright.
Got to second it.
Oh, second, I'm sorry, second. Well, I guess I didn't shine.
That's alright.
Motion to approve the November 9th minutes. Uh, James?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
And I am an I. I should have asked Curtis, is Danny not coming tonight?
Yeah, Danny, I, message me, he's not coming. He's, uh, he has come down with COVID and he's not feeling well.
Oh, forgot. Give, give him my regards, will you?
Will do, yep, absolutely.
Alright, moving right along. Other business, first up is election of officers for 2022. I will repeat what I say every year, just give me the nod and I will step down. If no one else wants to, I will do it. Chris, your eyes got really big.
I nominate Jesse as chair.
I second that.
Alright, voting for me is Ken, Harry, neither of you guys want to jump in? Nominate somebody else? Alright, voting for me as chair, James?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
And I guess I will be an I as well. I'd like to glowingly endorse James for continuing as vice chair, but I would also support any of the other individuals who might want to so serve. Nominating him now.
I will second James.
Alright.
As co-chair.
Voting for James. James as vice chair, James.
I think I have to abstain from this one, right?
I didn't, you can do whatever the heck you want. I don't think there's-
I think you actually can vote for yourself.
I don't think we're gonna get to a written ballot on this one, James, so it's okay.
You can't second yourself, but you can vote for yourself.
Chris?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
And I am an I. Alright, one more year in the books. So only other item is discussion array, the draft solar ordinance.
You got it.
Are you gonna update us on where we are?
Yes, so I shared this here, this here thingamajig. Um, this is the, this is a PowerPoint that I recently used to update the solar ordinance committee and I'm, I'm gonna be using to talk to a variety of different boards in the city over the month of January and early February. I'm gonna go before the cons comm, the, um, energy commission, you guys, uh, and the, one other group, oh yeah, the agricultural commission, um, to talk over, to talk over the variety of things that are in this because there's a couple of different moving parts that I want to make sure that we've got a good amount of buy-in on before this goes before city council. So, solar ordinance draft has been painstakingly worked over by a, a group, uh, the solar ordinance working group, which includes representatives of all the bodies just listed there minus the agricultural commission, um, and plus planning staff. It was i- intended as a complete rewrite, a section 7.3 of East Hampton zoning ordinance, but it's kind of reached out from there to amend a bunch of other portions of our zoning ordinance that touch upon, uh, solar, for instance, definitions, obviously, um, we're also proposing an overlay district to govern large-scale solar and we're probably going to address a small change in the, um, stormwater ordinance so that, uh, for solar projects, this, uh, conservation commission gets, uh, authority for, um, certain plan elements in the, for large-scale solar. The biggest change is that it takes what, uh, the thresholds that we had for solar arrays that already existed and breaks them into three different groups on the basis of their proposed environment and surrounding properties. Use group one, use group two, and use group three. Use group one solar facilities are the least impactful solar facilities. They're assumed to be solar facilities that we want to encourage by limiting their permitting needs and that impact neighbors very little, if at all. This includes like backyard residential accessory solar, um, building mounted solar, um, and things of that nature. Uh, then, we're gonna have site plan review for use group two solar, which is, uh, things like dual-use agricultural solar and, uh, impervious mounted solar. Solar uses that we might want to encourage as a contrast to the large-scale greenfield development solar, but that we would still want a little bit of regulatory authority to look at. And the last but not least, we both, uh, maintained a special permit requirement and slightly strengthened the criteria for the review of that special permit for large-scale solar facilities. The breakpoint from small point, small solar facilities to large smaller solar facilities is now 10,000 square feet of solar panel area, um, as compared to the old, um, energy generation criteria, which we figured might not be super flexible as solar cells get more and more effective. Last but not least, we're, we're, uh, proposing a limited solar, solar development overlay district, which is comprised of all of the lands in the city that are chapter 61 protected, so all of our agricultural lands, as well as a 200-foot buffer around our wetlands and fernal pools around, uh, around the city, that will be disallowed for that use group three large-scale greenfield solar. So, uh, basically what I just said there, um, the goal is that anything that isn't that big, large-scale solar will see substantial relaxation in the rules that apply to it and a much faster permitting process. For backyard solar and for building mounted solar, the types that we talked about, uh, the type that we saw, for instance, at, um, uh, River Valley Co-op, this could be rolled in as either a site plan of element of the original special permit or, uh, allowed by right as building mounted solar, which would give them flexibility and development and not require them to get another special permit. Um, this, yep.
What's the use of the word greenfield?
Greenfield here, we're taking to be anything that's not already existing, uh, built or, um, impervious surface layer. So anything that's, you know, it's basically anything that isn't already developed. The, the strict criteria is that there's like a undeveloped land layer that mass DEP puts out, that we're saying, um, counts as greenfields here, if it ever comes to question, but it is a little, it's, it's a little bit loose, it's intentionally a little bit loose to allow interpretation by future staff.
Use group one says greenfield solar, which would be undeveloped, under 2,000 square feet, and building mounted solar panels. Is the unbuilt and mounted separate from greenfield? So I'm trying to decide if, if they're saying that you're building a new 2,000-square-foot building with a roof of solar panels, or if that includes putting solar panels on a pre-developed roof?
So, uh, use group one would include both a new building with solar panels on top of it and an existing building with solar panels being put on top of it, or the, a 2,000-square-foot solar array in the backyard of a residential property or similar. 2,000 square feet was basically like the largest we could envision a residential property potentially needing. It's still small enough that it dodges, um, governance under the city's, uh, impervious surface layer and, uh, a bunch of other cons comm review, and it still allows a flexibility for like future homeowners to put in solar without needing, uh, a special permit from the planning board.
And one other question, if I may, uh, there's a lot of people that have already done roof-mounted solar or other solar, are they essentially grandfathered? Or if they were to trip, say, use group two, would they then be able to, or be required to retroactively go in and get the site plan review?
No, happily, use group one is by right. So, you know, if you've got building mounted solar and you add more building mounted solar, you're just as by right before as you were now. You don't need any permit from us, just the building permits.
But use group two?
Is, uh, your brownfield mounted solar, impervious mounted solar and dual use, any existing, um, solar facility is going to be pre-existing and non-conforming. So it was duly permitted at one point and now it's gonna be, it's gonna continue under whatever its original permits terms were. And if they needed to expand over a certain area, depending on the circumstances, they might be required to get a new site plan review.
So if you've got a home, a really big home with a really big roof and you've got 2,001 square feet that you put in in 2019, you won't be required to come in and get a new site plan review?
Correct, because building mounted solar of any size falls in that use group one. Use group one, uh, by right includes two subcategories. One is greenfield solar up to 2,000 square feet and two, building mounted solar of any scale. If I cover the entire River Valley Co-op in solar panels, all I need is this, is a building permit.
And also, we can't, we also can't retroactively zone, James, so we couldn't, we couldn't take that down either way.
Excellent, thank you.
No problem. Um, we've also, uh, asked for additional permitting requirements under the site, the special permit for the project, which would include things like a habitat plan, uh, that would identify wetlands and potential, uh, uh, mass DEP wet, uh, mass DEP wetlands and, um, MESA endangered species habitats, which we have a few in the city, especially around the area of Mount Tom. There'd be a requirement to obtain pollinator-friendly certification, which is pretty straightforward, and there'd be additional, there'd be additional requirement of fi- of finding that the planning board has received commentary from the conservation commission. This is still an item of hot debate, so I'll bring us right to that. Conservation Commission Review. So this is a new requirement for use group three and it came up during discussion. Um, we wanted to give more ability for the conservation commission to weigh in on ecologically sensitive projects like, really like, um, beacon solar, where it's a big area of clearance and it's, it's a lot of ecological change. But right now, the conservation commission's role is extremely limited towards commenting on impervious surface, if relevant, and, um, the Wetlands Protection Act, if relevant. If neither of those two things are relevant, their hands are kind of tied regarding commentary. I'm sorry, my, my son isn't here. I don't know if he's interrupting at all. Um, he, the, so the, we want to give a little bit more authority to the conservation commission to comment on projects of this type and also, uh, provide them criteria by which they could provide like a letter to the planning board, that the letter could use, that the planning board could use or ignore in making their own decision. This is controversial for two reasons. The one is it sets up a little bit of a dichotomy between the planning board and the conservation commission. It's hypothetically possible that the conservation commission could say, "We don't really like this project. We see that it threatens these ecologically sensitive areas, blah, blah, blah," and then the planning board can be said, say, you know, duly noted, "We grant this special permit." This is a situation that sometimes you want to avoid in, in public government. I am of two minds about it. Sometimes it's natural that boards disagree on things and I'm not totally opposed to them openly expressing that, but I can understand that we, we all need to work together and it's important to do that. And additionally, what it, the real reason I'm, we're concerned about is we want to make sure it doesn't represent undue regulation. This is a specific or unreasonable regulation, just a specific term under Mass General Law. Solar cannot be unduly regulated. Special, uh, you can't make a bunch of special rules that apply only to solar. Now, we're dodging this a little bit. You can require that they get a special permit and then say that a special permit is subject to a bunch of stuff. And you can say, "This doesn't apply to all solar, just the large-scale solar," but the courts have yet to decide what constitutes undue regulation and sending them to a second board for additional commentary letter could trigger that requirement. Still going through legal review on our side to determine whether that's something we want to do.
Quick question, Curtis, is, I don't see anywhere in here, but maybe you can point out, for this notion which is being considered, uh, any kind of timeline requirement that their board has to produce such a document in a said timeline?
Yes, we've, I've just replicated exactly the timeline that we are obliged, that, uh, that we get from every other, it's, it's, it's a goofy sounding one, it's like 35 days, um, which is actually the same, it's slightly shorter than what we already have as a requirement of, of delay from other departments to provide commentary from us. Now, the planning board has reached decisions before in the time in which we could still be hypothetically awaiting comments from other boards and it's been non-controversial so for, so far. So I'd imagine that would still potentially happen here, um, especially as long as the conservation, uh, agent and the planet, the planner staffing the planning board are in the same department. But that being said, the, the type, we've not created a longer timeline for conservation reply than the conservation agent already possesses. And that they would already be subject to for any special permit that comes with a planning board.
So is that 35 days from the point at which we, as a planning board, make a request? Or is that automatically done from the point at which an application comes for?
It's 35, it's 35 days from the point at which I send a formal transmittal message to everybody. Back in the olden days, that was paper, nowadays it's email.
And that's after the application's sort of put underway, all the formal middle go out?
They get a, they get a stamped copy of it that shows that it was duly submitted within 10 days, formally by city ordinance, within 10 days of that, I have to get it to everybody else.
It's rare that we'd put something on the agenda super fast anyway, so I think 35 days sounds reasonable, that's just personal.
And those go, so James, I often see those emails, I get copied when they go out each month for, or each meeting for the things that go out. And it, I can't think of one that we've done so quickly that people haven't either gotten back to us, or like the city engineer will say, "I haven't had a chance to look at it, but I want to," you know, that kind of stuff? Because a lot of this, you know, it comes up most frequently with stormwater, right, where we, we defer and wait for the cons comm for that anyway, um, in those situations. And that's sort of how I think of it, is sort of playing out in this case with what you proposed.
Especially because the circumstances in which we'd be waiting for this conservation commission review are specifically for large-scale solar facilities. Like, I couldn't imagine, um, reviewing and approving beacon solar in one evening, regardless of how much we want to, you know what I mean? There's just so much space in that kind of project and so much area in any large-scale solar facility, you know?
All it takes is one meeting where we show up and schedule a site visit and it will be longer than any window for them to reply. And so, I mean, I, I can't think of one where people have said they wanted to get back or have replied after we've already done something.
Okay, thank you. Especially, especially because just functionally speaking, we're all under the same roof, you know, I mean, presuming that Cassie and I both drop dead, even then, our replacements are both in the planning department, so it's kind of easy to schedule around one another.
I don't like that analogy.
I felt right.
Look who's here!
Alright, now for the magic of watching a screen, we shall be silent.
Yeah.
So dual-use solar, this is the last funky one. Um, this came in really, really late in the process and this is actually something that the state is only just starting to support. This is basically where you have very tall solar panels and then you grow shade-resistant crops underneath them, um, like blueberries and similar. Currently, haying fields are not included as a dual-use solar use, but things like blueberry fields or grazing fields for, um, goats are considered dual-use solar because you can have solar panels above and then, you know, scrubby crops beneath that, that animals can eat. Um, this is something that's gonna have to be shopped around. It really provoked, it really provoked a lot of strong feelings from people when I brought it up. Um, some of the farmers with whom I spoke were basically like, "I don't believe that that's really farming." And I was like, "Alright, well, we'll, we'll see about this," you know? Um, so this is, this is gonna be something that we define for the first time and explicitly allow within that dual-use, that, sorry, that use group two, uh, site plan review category, rather than the strict use group three special permit category, um, with the expectation that it will give greater flexibility for farmers who are otherwise disallowed from doing large use group three solar. The goal is that this represents a compromise that gives farmers flexibility in the use of their land to maintain profitability in a field that is not usually very profitable, farming, and that still maintains agricultural use, which is extremely important to the characteristics, culture, and makeup of the city of East Hampton. Or at least that's, that's what the working group really wanted to discuss.
Really interesting. I like the intent to support farmers, but the notion that, that they'd be receptive, like it's hard for me to envision how that'd be effective.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's, I'll, I'll admit, it's not like, I don't imagine it'll have very high uptake, but I want to provide that flexibility and link it to the state because I imagine that we will see more innovation in that sector. And by pointing to the state's definition under 225 CMR, we provide flexibility on our own ordinance so that as the state gets more, more interesting about its definitions, so too can we, you know what I mean? Like if they, if there's some sort of like super cool crop-integrated solar array where you've got like vining plants growing up, receptive solar array pan, uh, the total support pylons, man, I'd love to see it, you know?
Sure. So Curtis, lawyer hat here. So if we tell people you can't put, say, a solar field all through the Tasty Top property, but if you jack it up 15 feet and buy a goat to graze underneath it, you can? Is, is it that kind of a loophole?
It is, but more loop, more loopholes to jump through because in order to be a dual-use solar facility under our ordinance, you have to be a dual-use facility under, uh, 225 CMR, which means that you need to have registered with, uh, M DAR and DOER. Um, you need to, you need to go through these hoops to become a dual-use generating facility in the state's nomenclature. And then once you've been licensed by them, which is above my pay grade and expertise level, I say, "Okay, well, you're dual-use from our perspective too."
Interesting.
So they'd have to, they'd have to fool the state regulators whose job it is to not allow this to happen. And I offload the responsibility of, of stopping that to them.
Well, except we don't know what their standards are, right? So it might just be, is there solar and is there a goat? Check a box.
They've spelled it out in 225 CMR and it's a, it's a continuous permitting requirement that includes, uh, like air, aerial expectations, a, like as in of or pertaining to area.
Yeah.
Um, of area in use for specific uses that they enumerate under 225 CMR, you know? I don't ima, I don't doubt that there are loopholes, but one of the things that is comforting to me is that it is an annually renewed permit. So when the state permitting process catches that if you do a stupid thing, you say like, "Oh, we're gonna grow crops here," you fail to grow them and then you're, you just end up making a big tall solar panel, um, you're, you're gonna still end up in a situation where the state will catch you, revoke your dual-use license, and then you'll lose your dual-use license with us too.
Interesting.
Who does that review?
It's the two agencies, DOER and, jeez, I just said it, M DAR, the Massachusetts Department of Agriculture, the Department of, uh, Energy Resources. And then we, then grant a site plan review associated with it. Uh, this, this is the overlay district, uh, very spotty, I'm completely aware, and it looks a bit like a Petri dish. Um, so like I was saying, this is a couple of different, uh, data layers all joined together. The biggest one is it's the chapter 61 agricultural land in the city, plus, uh, endangered species habitats along Mount Tom, plus all of the water bodies in the city, including USGS identified streams, rivers, and a mass DEP identified wetlands, each with a 200-foot buffer matching in our current existing, um, uh, river protection overlay district. Um, this uniquely applies only to that use group three solar. So if there's existing brownfields or like a city dump that's in this area, um, you could develop that for solar because it's an existing contaminated ground and it's use group two solar. Um, you'd only need the site plan review. It just prevents that large-scale use group three solar from development. It also doesn't prevent properties that have already been permitted. You'll note that 50 Florence beacon solar is still in this map, uh, basically at the, the top center. Hello. Um, that is, that, since it's already been permitted, they would already, they would be, uh, capable of continuing development as they've already obtained their special permit from us. We've changed the zoning after them, they're gonna be pre-existing and conforming. So with that, very fast presentation out of the way. Um, so that's, that's the product as it exists right now. We're still doing a little bit of argument about some of the details, specifically regarding impervious mounted and building mounted solar. For example, one of the points of contention was, you know, how much of a building do you have to be before a solar panel mounted on you does, does not enjoy the protection of a use group one? Um, the, a specific discussion point was like, "Oh, okay, can you put them up on, um, carports like you did at, at River Valley Co-op?" We're still working on that to provide developers the maximum amount of flexibility while not opening a bunch of loopholes for someone to come in down the line and put in something and say, "Oh, now I, now I put them on structures, squeezy, peasy," you know? Um, there's obviously opportunities, for example, you know, like I can't develop, uh, Tasty Top into solar panels, but if I pave over the whole area, build a huge building that takes up the whole thing and then mount, mount solar panels on it, that would be my right. The only argument I can say to that is, then I haven't governed solar any more harshly than we've governed any other use in the city. Um, and that protects us from the accusation of undue regulation, which is important to this sort of use. The biggest reason ultimately why we're going to these lengths is because solar is uniquely free from certain, uh, denials because it's under Massachusetts General Law, chapter 48, section three. Um, and it's there, it's therefore become such a booming business in Western Mass that 50% of the solar panels that have been built have been, are built on previous agricultural or far forested land since 2010. So the desire to keep our remaining greenfields intact as much as is possible. Alright, so with all that said, uh, any questions, comments, or thoughts at this point, obviously knowing that you'll get the full formal document when it goes through the city council process, and I, I'm happy to answer any questions at any time.
My question's about anticipated timeline. When do we think that'll happen?
It's a good question. We're, I'm really hoping to bring it before our, our little committee working group again in February, uh, after I've met with basically all those constituent bodies in January, and then it'll be off to the ordinance committee. Um, Owen just informed me, he's not still on the ordinance committee, but he still wants to shepherd this actively. This was really his baby when it began. Oh, good job, you really checked a lot of that. Um, and he is going to be involved as like the champion of the process going forward in some capacity. Though, rest of the ordinance committee though, I'll be in touch with them and figure out what works for their schedule, um, if, if Owen's advancing it or not, you know?
Okay, thank you.
Looks great to me. I mean, I think that we've all been in the bylaw drafting seat before and this looks pretty awesome. So Chris, Curtis, whoever else is working behind the scenes, like, I'm sure we'll dive into the nuts and bolts in the future, but it looks like you guys have done a ton of work on it. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's been a really good process. I've really been happy to hear from Chris, from everybody else. I, people have just been great on the, the working group because there's just such a multiplicity of, it touches on so many things because it's a microcosm of what we want to do with some of the biggest underdeveloped parcels in East Hampton. And whether our goal is to see them be maximally developed for the profit and, uh, implications for the city, or to see them preserved as wild space or stuff like that. I mean, I've come into it pretty agnostic and I've been surprised at how vehement the opinions have been, in a, in a good way. People are invested, you know?
Did you model it after another city or town?
Yes, I've stole a bunch, I stole a bunch of language from Northampton, but the approaches, the, the use groups is ultimately unique and the overlay is obviously geographically unique.
Yeah, sure.
Um, but, but like, you know, copied from, um, let's say like Framingham. Northampton has a really robust language and I stole many of their more, many of the nuts and bolts things that they included that I didn't really go into here. For example, when I said, "Oh, now we need a habitat plan and like, uh, identify wetlands." Northampton has a whole tree protection ordinance. We have to identify every 20-inch DBH tree in your project area and talk about how you're gonna preserve or replant them. Just an extraordinary ordinance and not one that we can replicate easily because we'd be, if we wrote it here, it would apply only to solar, which would be ridiculous, you know? Um, but we stole some of the parts of it that could be maintained here for, you know, like stuff like, okay, you have to go out of your way to like actually identify habitats in the area or if there's wetlands, you have to, you have to, you know, how we get a traditional plan set that includes, you know, your construction plans, your, um, your, your as-built, all that jazz. We're including in that specifically like a landscape plan of before and after, you know, like what are, what are the, what does the tree cover look like and what's the total clearance that you're going to do for these solar panels, you know?
As I was looking at through it, I was going, wow, this is pretty thorough. I mean, I'd have to look at it, you know, 15 times to get my arms around it. It looked good.
Yeah, it's, it's still confusing. It's still, it's still tough for me, honestly. Like the discussions about like, oh, like what constitutes enough of a building is still a hot debate. And it's like, it goes into the fundamental like questions of how does zoning even regulate these things in the first place?
Ken, on your 15th time through, your beard will look like Chris's.
I know, right. When I started, my beard wasn't gray.
It's getting there, dude!
Curtis, the question about trees just reminded me, uh, Northampton has, um, one of the things I really like to have a look back for the tree removal, that we've, we've run into problems. We've run into problems here both with like threats and actions of people clearing lots before they come to be reviewed under our bylaw. Does this have a look back?
I have a cunning solution. So, um, this, this is the only time my, my former life as a mapper comes in here. The state has a, has a land use, a land cover analysis that they did back in 2016, which includes a polygon layer of everything that's visible from satellite, um, that's available for local analysis. I just took that and I said, "Okay, if it was trees in 2016, you can't, you can't, you can't develop over it," you know? Um, if you've cleared it since and you believe this is an error, come on before the planning board and argue why you think that's the case. But the default is the 2016 land use, uh, layer governs, uh, what land use is and any deviations from it will be, will be referred back to that 2016 land use layer, which is publicly available at the state and maintained by Massachusetts DPD.
So that works for the foreseeable future, that's good.
It also includes like our criteria for when I say, "Okay, what is a brownfield mounted soul?" A black, I'm sorry, uh, uh, impervious- It also includes like our criteria for when I say, okay, what is a brownfield-mounted sol- a black, I'm sorry, uh, uh, impervious-mounted sol- solar? If you go out and pave a parking lot tomorrow, I, my goal isn't that you adaptive reuse that new parking lot into being a, a solar panel, but that old land use layer includes your old impervious surface and your old parking lots. So if you can identify a parking lot there that you're turning into solar, then you get the protections of going in as, at a limited, at a less strict permitting requirement. Versus if you can't, then you can't justify it, then you're gonna go in as new greenfield solar, basically.
Very cool. Well done, folks.
Yeah.
Alright, well, I think our next meeting is a busy one, so we might wanna wrap this one up.
Motion to adjourn.
Are you all set, Curtis? Can we get there?
Yes, so we're good, we're good on solar, just wanted to keep you all informed. Next meeting is in fact a super busy one. So we're looking at three things. Um, the first is gonna be, maybe in four, there's two A and Rs. Uh, one, which is just totally a, a normal A and R, no problems, no problems. Another is a, is an A and R for ninety-three Northampton Street, which is to support the special permit application that's coming through for ninety-three Northampton Street, the Tasty Top parcel. It's not the whole parcel, but the portion of it right next to Burger King is being proposed for a Starbucks. That's gonna be a new special permit for a drive-through that's before us starting next meeting. And then last but not least, there's of course the um, the, the.
Four-Hell.
Four-Hell, exactly. For Starbucks, those plans are already available online. If you go to East Hampton, um, East Hampton uh, ma.gov slash Planning Board, they're under my new folder of twenty-twenty-two applications. If you have any trouble accessing it, just let me know. I, I'm wondering if I set up a hyperlink properly on it, but it'll be right by tomorrow at least.
Alright, should be a doozy. I believe there's a motion to adjourn from James. Can I get a second?
Second.
Alright, voting to adjourn. James.
I.
Ken.
I.
Harry.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
And I am an I. Thanks again as always, folks.
Thank you, everyone.
Couple weeks.
Thank you.